All right, welcome to the Murfreesboro City Council meeting. It's August 31st, 2017. Councilmember Kurt Wade has a prayer. I want to say a special part tonight about our friends in Texas, that you'll keep the entire state of Texas in your prayers. We've got our Swiftwater team and has partnered with the Rutherford County Sort Team, and they left yesterday mid-morning, arrived down there about 10 o'clock this morning. So Chief Foltz was letting us know that they're all okay, but they're all getting to work. So in true Tennessee tradition, we're headed to Texas to help out, and we'll keep that state in our prayer. Kurt?
Let's pray. Oh, we just thank you for this day. We thank you for the city of Houston. We ask you to bless those people that have been displaced. We just ask you to put your arms around them. We ask you to bless this council today to make decisions on what's best for Murfreesboro. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have two ceremonial items tonight. We have a Stars Award, so we have our HR Director, Ms. Sherri Carpenter is coming to the podium, and then also, we have a presentation by Brian Hercules, who's gonna make that right after the Stars Award.
Now let's keep it at two if you may.
Oh, we have one more after that.
Well, Honorable Mayor and members of the Murfreesboro City Council, it has been ten years since I've addressed you, but I will say, I see many very familiar faces. It is my honor and privilege to be here tonight to introduce to you Mr. Ralph King. Mr. Ralph King is being honored as our Stars Award recipient. He has 30 years of service with the city of Murfreesboro, and he is currently a driver in the solid waste department. Mr. King received two nominations for the Stars Award. As you're aware, the Stars program is a way by which the city can recognize outstanding performance by our employees. The first nomination was for assisting an elderly citizen who had fallen in his front yard. The second stemmed from his on-duty response to an overturned garbage container that had strewn garbage in the street. A citizen provided the following narrative. "I observed Mr. King exhibit the core values of an employee who wants a cleaner and better city in which to live. Due to the excessive wind the previous night, there was an overturned garbage container two doors from my house. I just happened to be standing at the corner of my home and observed Mr. King get out of his truck and spend what was probably five minutes picking up every piece of trash and placing it in the container. I was so impressed, I stopped his truck and introduced myself as he stopped to service my home. I told him he was a great representative of the city, and his superior should be extremely proud. He made me proud as a citizen." In both instances, Mr. King presented the city in a positive light by exhibiting the core values that promotes the city's vision of creating a better quality of life. And I will tell you, when Mr. King did this, he didn't know anyone was watching. I remember years ago, we lost an exceptional young police officer, Matthew Lovejoy, and at his service, someone shared that he had done a great kindness, and he said, "You know, if anyone outside of us knows about this, we did it for the wrong reason." And I will tell you, with Mr. King, he didn't know anyone was watching when he did these things. So we're incredibly proud of him, and want to recognize him, and have the mayor provide him with this award.
Mr. King? It's our pleasure to give you your Service Excellence Award. I want to say thank you for what you do on a daily basis, and you know, I tell my kids all the time, it's not what you do when people are watching, it's what you do when people aren't watching, and that you are a great example to the employees of this city, and thank you for what you do.
Thank you. First of all, give it on to God, to the one that made this possible. I know if it weren't for Him, that this would never happen. And I just want to say that I thank the ones that recommended me to receive this award, and also, the ones that represent, you know, you know, there's just so many that you can't, you know, think of right now, but I just want to thank the mayor, Shane McFarland, and all the city managers, Mr. Rob Lyon, Mr. Jim Crumley. I just want to thank this wonderful city council, you know, for thinking about me, and I mean, you all doing a wonderful job. And I also want to thank my supervisor, Joyce Smith, and Tim Reed, you know, for, you know, staying in and helping me out, making me be a better employee, and not to forget the Fleet Service. I know things like this would never happen if it weren't for them, you know, keeping our trucks on the road and stuff. So I just appreciate, and I thank the city of Murfreesboro, and it's just so many that I want to say thank you to, but once again, just thank you, Murfreesboro. Thank the city council.
Mr. King? Mr. King, something I want to say to you, I don't know, I know you remember this. When you came to my dad years ago, and said, "Mr. T-Nine, I need a job," and he got you on, I think at the time it was the sanitation department, and I remember you coming by often and letting daddy give you good advice and mentor you. But something else the city may not know about you, I know on one of your routes, that it's a disabled person, and that you personally get out of your truck, roll the can to the street, empty that can, and take that can right back to the house. I do know that. Another thing I know about you is that this man has never parked his truck at night without washing it. I mean, I'm serious. He washes his truck every day it's not raining, and you have the cleanest truck. Now you have a new truck, but the people don't know, but he and Joy can tell you, every night when he comes in, he washes his truck. We just appreciate your service.
Thank you, Mr. King. All right, we now have a presentation by Brian Hercules. He's the Senior VP of Economic Development with our chamber, and I also have our General Manager of MED, P.D. Minnet, who's here as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Council, and City Manager for allowing us to come tonight. As you know, I have the distinct honor of representing our community and our county in economic development, and you know, we live in a very, very blessed community and a very blessed location, and I'm just proud to represent our community. I'm here tonight because three years ago, we stood before you. TVA, and I'm gonna introduce a couple of folks from TVA in just a minute, they have a program called Sustainable Cities, and they grade cities based on the sustainability. We went through that process and achieved the gold level sustainability, and that award was recognized for the last three years. We are now entering into the second cycle, and we've just gone through the process, but one thing that I would say before I introduce our friends from TVA, economic development is a team sport, and believe you me, I understand the value of the team. This is not a process that the Chamber of Commerce went through by itself. This was a community effort. The city of Murfreesboro, and more importantly, Jennifer Moody led that charge as part of our team, and I want to thank her, P.D. Minnet, and his group from Murfreesboro Electric was involved in this, and also Joe Whitfield from MTSU, and it took all of us pulling together to capitalize on the assets to achieve, yet again, a second gold level Sustainability Cities for Murfreesboro. So I'm very proud to present that to you tonight. Now I'd like to introduce Jessica Barrow, who's the Senior Consultant in Economic Development, and also Katrina Shirley, who is a consultant in economic development, to tell you a little bit more in-depth about the process and present the certificate.
Thank you. Thank you, Brian. Good evening. Just to share a little bit about the Valley Sustainable Communities Program. So we are in our sixth year of that program, and TVA is able to offer that in partnership with our local power companies, so I'm glad that Murfreesboro Electric could join us, and also Middle Tennessee Electric in Rutherford County as well. We'd like to thank them for their support and partnership of everything that TVA is able to do in an economic development space. Specifically, the Valley Sustainable Communities Program is our effort to connect local economic development efforts with sustainable initiatives. So we continue to get questions, increasing questions, from companies that are considering new locations around what a community is doing in a sustainable space, and so we want to make sure that while we are very excited to see our communities grow and add quality jobs, we certainly want to do that in a way that's responsible to all of the citizens that already live here. So that is what this program's intended to do. It gives a community an extra little bit of an edge when they're competing for economic development projects, and we just are here to congratulate Murfreesboro and the city of Murfreesboro on continuing to participate in our program and have that gold designation for another three years. So thank you very much for your support, and we look forward to continued opportunities to work with you all.
Absolutely. Thank you very much, and congratulations.
Thank you very much. I have a lot of people I want to thank for this. Thank you, Brian. Thank you all for what you do. Last but not least, you know, this is our third time of having Mr. Tucker here. He gave me his book a month or so ago, Remembering Rutherford, and it's got all kinds of cool historical facts in there. So Mr. Tucker is gonna give us our monthly history lesson. What's the street?
Thank you, Mayor Shane. Let me begin with a confession. I used to be a trial lawyer, long time ago, far, far away, Washington DC, but I do recall from that period that certainly we learned that there are lessons to be drawn from even the minor cases that occur in our community. And I glanced at the calendar and realized that tomorrow begins September, and I recall of September many years ago, September 1941, three months before the world changed forever. But in Murfreesboro in September 1941, of course, the students were going back to school, football was on the minds of everybody, but the most interesting and entertaining, and to some extent controversial matter for the adults, particularly those around the square in September 1941, was the fish fry case. It seems that a new law had gone into effect during the summer that outlawed saning. Now for those of you that don't know what saning is, that's fishing with a net, and if you're fishing in some of the creeks and rivers in Rutherford County, you can pretty well clean it out with a saning net. Well, saning was outlawed, but the legislature took another step and said, "Anyone who uses the results of saning will share the guilt with the saning party as well." Labor Day, there was a large party on the farm of one of what we called squires back then, Squire John Randolph, our county commissioners today. It certainly had political overtones. He was a fish fry. Squire Edwin Neely produced the fish, provided the fish, which he had gotten by saning Stones River. He was, of course, charged with the illegal act of saning. His wife, Mrs. Neely, cooked the fish, and was charged with the illegal act of cooking the fish. Squire, I don't want to get this name right, Squire Sam Vaughn, was charged with the illegal act of eating the fish. This all came to a head before Judge Coleman in the middle of September. As the trial commenced, the crowd filled the courtroom in the old courthouse, filled it such that you couldn't get in even to stand. September, the humidity and the heat was oppressive. That kind of crowd made it even worse. They opened all the windows around the courtroom, all the way up to the top of the sash, hoping to get a breeze at least through the courtroom, cool it down a little bit. But what actually happened is the people that couldn't get into the courtroom crowded into the windows. So you had the people up against the sill of the window, and then people behind them. The trial commenced, and there was a constant buzz because the people back of the window standards couldn't hear directly, so every time something was said, the people at the window had to whisper back to the people behind them, who whispered back, who whispered back. So everything said in the courtroom would rumble a little bit down through the crowd. A colorful character of my type, Clarence L. Cummins, had offered to defend and was assigned the defense of Sam, the one who illegally ate the fish. Clarence maneuvered so that he would be the last one to speak in the case. The facts were not in question, and very quickly, they got to the attorneys and their advocacy and their arguments. Now Cummins, if Hollywood wanted a stereotype or a classic of the stereotype of the Depression era, small-town country lawyer, Clarence would fit the bill. He was flamboyant, both in style and appearance. He also was quite good, and had a reputation for being a winning lawyer when he was sober. But if he was half-lit, he was even more entertaining and more. When it came his time, he walked up to the podium, wiped the sweat off his forehead, pulled out his Bible, and started a sermon. Well-worn Bible, he knew it, chapter and verse, never opened the Bible, just held it and waved it when he was speaking. He spoke of how the good Lord had an affinity for fishermen, how the early work of the Christian church was done by fishermen, and then he turned to the story of the fishes and loaves, and said, "It was the intent of our good Lord that man should enjoy the fruits of the sea and the waters that run into the sea." As he got on into his sermon, it was obvious that the crowd was with him. "Amen. We're with you, brother. Tell them, tell them." The crowd was clearly with him. As he came to the end, he reared back and said, "This trial is not a prosecution, this is a religious persecution, in violation of not only our Constitution, but the Holy Scripture." At that point, the crowd's reaction was such that the judge knew it was all over. Judge Coleman rapped, and rapped, and finally got the attention back from the crowd, and he dismissed the eater and the cooker, and he fined the illegal saner $1, and sent them all home. There are lessons to be learned from this, I think. Number one is obvious, don't mess with the cook. Number two is, you're gonna have a tough time beating a biblical argument. And number three, seriously, for those who would legislate or prosecute, don't overreach. Don't overreach. There may be some reason or rationale for game and fishing regulations, but let's not overreach, because if you do, you're gonna get your hand slapped, and very likely with the Bible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Thank you, thank you. All right, you have your consent agenda in front of you. You do have one thing on Item C, and then Letter G. We need to make sure that the motion on the consent agenda has subject to final approval of the contract terms by the city attorney.
If there's no questions or comment, I move for approval with the understanding that there will be...
Contract approval by the city attorney.
Contract approval by the city attorney.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, we call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. You have the minutes of the August 3rd, 17th, and August 17th, special meeting and August 17th regular meeting.
So move.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright?
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll move into second readings, and consider for passage on second and final reading ordinance 17036, amending Appendix A zoning sections 9 and 31 regarding cell towers, small cell antennas, and underground fiber optic cables. Section 27 and Table 2 regarding landscaping in Chart 1 and Chart 4, and repealing and replacing ordinance 17014, amending Charter 1, Table 2 prior to second reading.
Mayor, this amendment prior to second reading is to substitute a corrected Chart 1 and Table 2. In the process, again, of having multiple amendments flowing through at the same time, those two charts that were attached at our first reading have been updated by another ordinance amendment, so the updated charts are attached to this reading now, so we would ask that you amend it by substituting the corrected charts, and then consider it on second reading.
Can we have a motion as amended?
To amend.
Need the motion to amend, and then we'll have a motion on the amended motion.
Motion amended. Second.
Motion is second for the amendment.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Consider for passage on second and final reading ordinance 170Z37 to amend the conditions applicable to approximately 27.34 acres in the planned unit development, PUD District, located along Las Casas Pike, Emerald Place, PUD.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright?
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Consider for passage on second and final reading ordinance 170Z38 to amend the conditions applicable to approximately 46.2 acres in the planned residential development, PRD District, located along Sulphur Springs Road. Estates at Prim Spring PRD, formerly Oakley Springs PRD. I think we have amendment on this one as well, Mr. Ives.
Yes, there is an amendment to this. We are asking, because of the public safety implications of this change, we are asking that this be amended to be effective immediately upon passage tonight, rather than waiting the standard 15 days for an ordinary ordinance amendment. So the amendment would be to make it effective immediately upon passage.
Move for approval, subject comments of previous comments by David Ives.
Second.
Motion is second, Ms. Wright?
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Consider for passage on second and final reading ordinance 17039, amending Murfreesboro City Code, Appendix A zoning, section 2 interpretations and definitions, section 7 site plan review, section 26 off-street parking, queuing and loading pertaining to pavement materials and site plan review.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, we call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll now consider new business, and consider for approval or renewal of certificate of compliance of retail liquor store for Keisha and Patel and Harris Patel at the Wine Cellar 2206 Memorial Boulevard.
Mayor, this is a requirement by the state of Tennessee every two years for owners of a package store, and this application has met our requirements for you to approve that if you wish to tonight.
Any questions?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright?
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll now consider recommendations of the planning commission to schedule public hearings for the annexation plan of services and annexation petition for approximately 107.6 acres located along Yergin Road, Mary Lou Dotson applicant, and then we also have the zoning application for the same piece of property simultaneous with annexation, Magnolia Grove, PRD, TV LP Management LLC applicant. Mr. Baum, what date would you like?
Mayor McFarland, we would recommend October the 12th for both public hearings. Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright?
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Thank you.
Mr. Baum, who's Auburn playing this week?
Georgia Southern.
All right, we'll consider recommendations of the city engineer for proposal for appraisal services for Jones Boulevard improvements. Mr. Griffith?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the city council, do have for you a couple items tonight, the first of which is regarding Jones Boulevard. SEC has completed their design, and we've had a public meeting and set the right-of-way easements needed to complete the work. If you remember, Jones Boulevard is primarily a pedestrian improvement project, as well as drainage improvement project, stretching from West Northfield to Ridgely Road. Most of the property to be acquired will be minimal, and will include temporary construction easements necessary to build the sidewalks and multi-use path, and to tie in the adjacent property. Staff has requested and received proposal from Rhett Turner to complete 101 nominal payment parcels. These are a lot simpler appraisals than the full appraisal reports that we get on a lot of projects, and they're, it's something that T-Dot uses whenever the anticipated amount that's offered to each owner will not exceed $10,000. Staff recommends completing two full appraisal reports on properties that may actually exceed that $10,000 amount. Based on the scope of services, the amount of work to be performed is $42,350. If any additional full appraisals will be needed, it will be completed for $2,500 to $3,500 per report. That's done if the property owner doesn't actually accept the offer, and it has to have a condemnation filed. With that, I recommend approval of the appraisal service contract with Rhett Turner. Be happy to answer any questions.
If there's no comments, I move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright?
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll now consider proposal for a geotechnical exploration services for Cherry Lane Phase 2.
Once again, our consultant, Wiser Consultants, has determined the alignment of the proposed extension of Cherry Lane Phase 2, which will extend from the west boundary of the Seagull Soccer Complex to near the intersection of Alfred Road and Sulphur Springs. Phase 3 of Cherry Lane extends from the intersection to the interchange of I-840, or to complete an interchange of I-840 and on to Northwest Broad Street. I've included a layout plan for your use. Staff has requested and received the attached proposal from TTL to perform the geotechnical work. The exploration will gather data about depth of bedrock, weaker problematic soils, presence of karst features, and suitability of soils for reuse of this field. or, I'm sorry, Phase Three, and TTL is completing it as well. We recommend a not-to-exceed budget of thirty-six thousand dollars for the, for the exploration, and the services be paid from the TML law owner, the bond issue for the project. With that, I would recommend approval of the material testing and, and exploration contract, um, subject to review by the city attorney. Be happy to answer any questions.
If there's no questions, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion to second, Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. We'll now consider recommendations of the Chief of Police, uh, prove expenditures of funds for the purchase of furniture for the new police headquarters at one zero zero four North Highland Avenue.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. Before you to ask for the expenditure funds for the, uh, furniture for one zero zero four North Highland, uh, in the amount of, let me get the right page here. Uh, one million four hundred eleven thousand seven hundred one dollars and seventy-nine cents. We came up, uh, a while ago, we, uh, went furniture shopping with, for vendors, uh, we went to vendors that supplied on GSA, we did a site visit, and, uh, we looked at the quality of the furniture, and from that, we then narrowed the choice down to two vendors. They did a mock-up, uh, following this, that selection, they did, uh, the mock-up at our facility, employees were able to view the furniture, and at the same time, we took in bids. They both coincided with each other, the employees, uh, selected Synergy, and also they came in with the most competitive fi- uh, financial bid. This outlays all the office furniture and, uh, training areas for the building. I have, uh, Malik Sherry, who works with the interior design, and Sarah Wright, uh, with, uh, Synergy, that can answer more technical questions if we have, and we're available for questions at this time.
Rob, I guess it'd be a question for you, do you have, um, is this money included in what we would've asked for in the CIP to build?
Yeah, thank you for, uh, for asking, because, you know, I think we may have two options. Um, we had a meeting at the, uh, police headquarters, uh, this morning, um, this project, the current construction project with Bell Construction, uh, included a contingency line item because things happen through the course of a project in an allowance, the allowance for, for things like unsuitable soils and things you pay for by the quantity. Right now, in, in this project, we're moving toward the finish phase of this project, they're painting now, uh, much of the drywall is up, uh, we will, uh, get the building in, in December, um, and right now, we've got about two million dollars in both contingency and, um, our allowances that we haven't spent yet. So it's very possible that as we get closer to punching the building out, we can fund this furniture purchase when it comes in from the monies not spent on the contingency, and that would mean we'd be able to, you know, borrow less on that one line item in the bond issue that you're, uh, gonna be considering later this year. Uh, so, you know, the chief's recommendation wrote it up is, you know, in the CIP, uh, that's probably definitely a safe, uh, bet, but I think it's highly likely we'll be able to, uh, pay for the furniture with money that's already been borrowed, uh, for the police headquarters since we're doing well on that one.
One of the things I would, I would just mention to you guys, just sort of as a heads up, that, that I would be curious, as we go into CIP discussions, it was something I was gonna bring, uh, or to ask at the five o'clock meeting, um, is, you know, I think it has to do with this, I'm, I'm fine with moving, uh, moving ahead with this, but to try to figure out sort of where we kinda are on the, on that building, it's such a big project, I, you know, generally like to know sorta, you know, where we started, you know, with our expectations of borrowing and kinda where we are now, now that we're so close.
Yeah.
And that'll help kinda go towards our CIP discussion, but.
Yeah, I, I think the good news is we've got, uh, you know, just under two million dollars of money that we thought we were gonna have to spend that we haven't, so, uh, we're pleased, and, you know, time is of the essence on this furniture purchase, it's going to take a while for them to process the purchase order, uh, for them to, you know, place the order, for the furniture to be made and then delivered, uh, and that'll be delivered in, in probably stages because there are so many pieces here.
And, uh, I, they advised today during the, uh, meeting, we're fourteen weeks out for, uh, substantial completion, and I think the lead time roughly, and, uh, if you need further, is roughly about twelve weeks for this furniture to come in for production and delivery.
How close are we to the budgeted amount? I know we haven't, I'm not, in dollars, I mean, are we pretty close to what we have allotted for this building, uh, are we close to going over what we have allotted?
No, we're, we're doing well on the budget for the, um, for the construction, yes.
No other comments, I move for approval.
Second.
Motion to second, Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll now approve, uh, expenditure of funds, don't, don't leave yet, Mr. Chief, uh, the purchase of the DIRRT dirt package for the new police headquarters at one zero zero four North Highland Avenue.
And this, uh, this is part of the furniture package, I believe it's in the EOC and some other areas, uh, it stands for do it right this time, uh, and so it's, uh, walls and, uh, different pieces that are movable and they're sustainable, uh, and they're all part of the design package, uh, for the building. And I can answer any questions you might have, and I might need, uh, to bring up Ms. Wright if you have more technical questions.
I think all of us have had the opportunity to tour the building in the last couple weeks and see the progress and the improvement that's, uh, being made over there, and certainly with the facility, uh, we, uh, wanna make sure that it's, um, adequate for not only the police officers and, and those guys who are gonna be using it on a daily basis, but it does look like the building has, uh, a tremendous opportunity to provide meeting space and, um, room for, uh, the public as well, so I, I think there's, um, this benefits not just the police officers and the police department, but the, uh, the, the public as well, and, uh, and if there's no other questions about this, I'll move for approval.
Second. Motion to second, Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Chief. All right, you have several beer permits.
Miss Mayor, we have a special event permit tonight for Middle Tennessee State University Foundation College of Liberal Arts for a fundraiser, uh, not a fundraiser, but a reception, uh, at, on October ninth, twenty seventeen, at thirty fifty Medical Center Parkway. We also have a special event, uh, application for Oakland's Association for fundraiser on September twenty-third, twenty seventeen, on their property. We have an application for a new location to sell beer at sixteen sixty-four Middle Tennessee Boulevard at a grocery market, and that application is complete for the background check, but we are still waiting for them to complete their building codes inspection, so if approved, we will issue that, um, upon approval of, of council tonight, and the, the inspection's been completed. Finally, we have a manufacturer permit for our new location that is currently selling beer as retail, this is the first one for manufacturing at that location, seven fourteen West Main Street, Suite F, and the background check there is, uh, in accordance with our standards, but they do still need to finish their inspections from the Building Codes Department. Be glad to try to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Wright?
If no comments, I move for approval.
Second.
Motion to second, Ms. Wright will call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We have no board and commission appointments, um, you have three state, or three bills need to be paid?
Move to pay the bills.
Second. Motion to second, Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we have, under other business, we have, uh, Mr. Crumley has an item for Patterson Park Pool, say that three times.
Mayor, I apologize for this being late, I really hadn't anticipated we wouldn't meet maybe for a couple of weeks. The dehumidification system at Patterson Park Indoor Pool has never actually functioned up to its specifications, there have been constant problems with both the temperatures and the amount of humidity that are left inside the building. About eighteen months ago, council hired Losen Associates to do a study of the pool that resulted in a series of specifications that were bid. We had one bidder and that low bid was eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that is several hundred thousand dollars more than we had budgeted for the project. In the meantime, as the contract with, uh, Energy Systems Group went forward on other structures of the building, we found out that they have some expertise in swimming pools, uh, not inside the company, but through a subcontractor engineering firm that they use on all of their projects that involve indoor and outdoor pools. Uh, we asked them to look at the specifications and look at the bid that was received, uh, they have responded by saying that their consulting firm would use an hourly rate not to exceed forty thousand dollars to examine, uh, the specifications in the plan. There is a real lack of confidence that the eight hundred and fifty thousand dollar solution currently proposed will actually do, uh, what we intend to accomplish with dehumidification at the pool. We think having a expert in swimming pools, both indoor and outdoor pools, look at the plans, and if need be redesign some of the plans, is a valuable expenditure of the money. The dollars come from the contingency in ESG's contract, there is no change in the overall contract amount. Uh, when air conditioning systems were changed on the Fire Administration Water Super Engineering building, uh, we created a little over a three hundred thousand dollar contingency with those savings, and so the dollars to actually do this look at the dehumidification system come from those savings inside of the contract. Be glad to try to answer any questions, as long as they're not specific about how do you dehumidify an indoor swimming pool.
So is the eight hundred and fifty thousand dollar bid, bid that we got, was it supposed to be part of the eight point one million dollars, it's, it's a totally separate thing?
It was totally separate. Uh, the amount of money we budgeted originally in the CIP for dehumidification at Patterson was about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We knew it was gonna be an expensive proposition, dehumidification systems are not, uh, by their very nature economical, and, uh, when the, when the only bid came back so far above the budget, and then in questioning, uh, the contractor and to some degree, the, uh, the engineers involved, our confidence level in going forward was really just not there.
So did we pay them anything for their work so far?
We have paid Loes some dollars, yes.
About how much?
I, I don't know, I'm sorry, I don't have that answer.
I'm just trying to figure out if we've already paid them forty, and we're adding another forty now, that we're at eighty towards our five hundred, that, you know, we're starting to make a dent in the five hundred thousand.
I, I'll, I'll find out the amount that Loes has been compensated, but, uh, they have been compensated for their work to date.
Jim, I'm definitely not trying to give you a sales pitch for any company that provides large fans, but, uh, I've got a friend who works for a, uh, company that makes, what's it called? It's, they're large fans, and, um, the, um, the, um, they use those fans at the University of Alabama, I think they use them at Auburn, I think they use them at Kentucky, and all their aquatic centers, and in my conversations with him, he's generally told me that the humidity problem is generally because of lack of circulation of the air, not the, the dehumidifying part of the problem. Is, have we looked at that option and gone thoroughly through that, uh, because I, I would think that a fan would, would probably come in significantly less than what a, uh, complete dehumidification system would cost, I mean, it, uh, is, is that something we've looked at?
The large fans, to my understanding, were part of the solution proposed, uh, in the, in the Loes proposal. Patterson's complicated because of the glass, uh, and the unique ability of that glass to bring heat on some days and not bring heat on cloudy days into that pool area. It, it's a little more tricky than, I think, your average indoor pool, we don't have these kind of issues at Sportscom, but we don't have all that glass at Sportscom, uh, but my understanding is the large fans to circulate the air is part of a solution.
I'd just say, I'd personally like to make sure, see where we are with the other, the other money first, so I'll probably abstain until second reading, just, just make sure and see what we've already paid in so far, and then, uh, a forty thousand bucks is a lot of money for them to just tell us.
And, and that's an up to amount, if the consultant looks at the existing plans and decides that is the best solution, then we're just left with an expensive solution. Uh, if they have to go through and redesign, then you could be up to the forty thousand dollar number.
So, seems like we have more questions, so I move to defer it until we get all of the information that we need in order to make a decision.
We'll, we'll get more information and, and come back to you.
I mean, what's the, I know we've got, um, what's the timeline on this, 'cause we, the reason I ask this, we.
The, the bids are gonna expire, I think, before we can get any real evaluation.
Okay.
And eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I think we gotta point the same in terms of what it could cost.
Yeah, and I think this is something that we, you know, the reason I ask this, Dr. Harper, who is one of my accounting teachers at MTSU, uses Patterson Park regularly, and he will email me on a week, not weekly basis, but quite frequently asking, hey, where are we on this, where, you know, what are y'all doing? But, you know, Patterson Park is what, fifteen years old now?
Yes.
And I, I think as we start talking about new facilities, you know, we've spent, the, the, the pool was three hundred and fifty thousand, does that sound right? Oh, not the pool, the, the slide that we just replaced, I think it was, I think it was, it was three fifty. Yeah, I think it was three fifty, but we, you know, the maintenance on these type of facilities, when we're looking at eight fifty plus three fifty, so you got one point two million in fifteen years, you're, you're really looking at, you know, just in capital expenditures, a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars a year, just for those two items, so it's something definitely to know that.
Expectancy life's about twenty-five years before it has to have a complete replacement.
Yeah.
I tell you what I prefer to do, just to be honest with you, and I'll throw it out here for you, I won't make it into form of motion unless I see at least come somebody nod their head, but, I mean, my preference would be to, to make this number twenty thousand, I, I wouldn't pay anybody more than five hundred bucks to look at a set of plans and say, yeah, let's go that way. So if we say it's twenty thousand, and then it turns out they gotta do a whole reassessment, and you need to come back to us and say, hey, look, it turned, it turns out to be.
We're giving two pieces, we're evaluating the, the existing solution, give us a recommendation.
Yeah.
We need you to design something.
I'll make it into form of motion then.
Second. Motion to second, Ms. Wright.
I need to remove my motion first.
I'm sorry, that's right. I'm sorry. That's right.
Yeah, thanks.
Because I made a motion.
Sorry about that.
No problem.
All right. We have a motion is second for twenty thousand dollars, and then if it's any more, you guys will come back to us. Ms. Wright will call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We had our city manager evaluation tonight, and really just wanted to bring up under other business what the council wanted to do as far as Mr. Line's salary and have a discussion on that.
Our employees got what, two percent?
Two percent.
I would suggest that we give Rob the same raise that we gave the rest of the employees, which was two percent.
Ms. Wright, do you remember what the raise was? I want to, I said two percent last year, I think was two, was...
I was thinking three as well.
Okay.
I thought it was three.
Three.
No.
I thought it was two. Is it three?
I think it's three. I don't think...
I'm pretty sure it was three. I think two percent would have not been efficient for them.
We did two the year before that, then?
No.
We had a two in there.
We did. It ended up being almost five, because we did the two.
Two and two.
Do you want to...
It was two last year and three this year.
Is there a way to word that, that whatever, to do the same as everyone else got?
Yeah, I'm comfortable with that. And that was the basis of it, to give them the same raise that the rest of the employees got. So I would say, let's give them the same raise as the, same percentage raise as the rest of the employees got.
Second.
Sure.
I'm sorry. Is there any reason that we need to say retro or be retro, or is that something we want to do?
My understanding was that we were going to do that, and...
Yeah, yeah, and I think, I agree. I think it should be retroactive to...
First the physical year.
Retroactive not to exceed three percent. How's that sound?
All right. Motion is second.
Ten point two five percent interest.
All right.
I'm going to hit you for a long.
Councilman Shacklet was the second. That's funny.
Ready?
Motion is second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Thank you.
Any other business? I think we have one big thing on Saturday. Can anyone name what that is?
Go Blue Raiders.
That's right. Ms. Skels Harris is already wearing her blue, so...
Oh, yeah.
Murphusboro is playing Vandy at home. So all y'all out there and watching Channel Three, as religious as I know everyone does, because that's what people do on a Thursday night when all TV is to watch.
There's tornado warnings out.
That's right. Yeah, that's right.
Wednesday was also Ms. Skels Harris birthday.
What's that?
Yesterday was Ms. Skels Harris birthday.
All right. Happy birthday.
A member of the sixty-five club Medicare.
Twenty-nine.
All right.
Yay, Medicare.
Celebration. Awesome.
Yeah, and let's, in our prayers, keep eastern in our prayers.
We'll say, we had the opportunity to walk through the new police headquarters. I think it was Fri-, was it Friday, Kurt, that we walked through? Yeah, and I think that's going to be something we're all going to be proud of. So I know we voted for furniture and lots of stuff tonight, but it's pretty cool to walk through and see how excited the officers are about having a new home, and I think it's going to be something that will, the whole area will be proud of.
And we'll have a community open house before they move in the sensitive law enforcement materials. Probably in November sometime, we'll get a date and advertise that, but we want to show the building off to the community and have an open house, of course.
All right. Thank y'all for your hard work. We will stand adjourn. Go Blue.